Meeting of the Brooklyn City Council to order, please. Mary Jo, would you call the roll?
Barb Politzky.
Here.
Ron Van Kirk.
Here.
Tony DiMarco.
He is absent, excused.
Debbie Tomusco.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Mary Bell Beer.
She is also absent, excused.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We have some approval of minutes for February 22nd, but since we do not have enough people here that are able to vote on that, we are going to move that on to the next meeting. Since our last meeting, I trust that everyone had a blessed Easter celebration. We certainly had beautiful weather yesterday, so I trust whoever you celebrate Easter that you had a wonderful time with your family. At the conclusion of our last council meeting, after our interview in executive sessions, we confirmed Jim McDonald is Brooklyn's new prosecutor. Mr. McDonald has a wealth of experience, and we're very fortunate to have him onboard, so I wanted to officially welcome him to the city of Brooklyn. On tonight's agenda, we do have a confirmation of appointment to the Economic Development Committee. We also have ordinance 2015-77, which is in abeyance, establishing the full-time position of Economic Development Director with the City of Brooklyn, Ohio. Ordinance 2016-9, which is up for third reading and adoption. It's authorizing the mayor to enter into a service agreement renewal with Bailey Communications to provide for maintenance of network, software support, and other related services for the city of Brooklyn. Then we have ordinances 2016-15 through ordinances 2016-19, which are all establishing updated fees for the REC Center, and those are on third reading, and we'll pass those hopefully tonight. Ordinance 2016-22 is the authorizing of sale of certain city-owned vehicles through gov deals. There is two pieces of equipment that are up for sale through auction, and this will be on second reading. Ordinance 2016-23 is establishing fees for advertising at the John M. Coin Recreation Center. It's on second reading. We also have a resolution 2016-1 to honor and recognize Margaret Hoven for her service to the City of Brooklyn, Ohio. An ordinance 2016-25, establishing the fee for participation in the City of Brooklyn's farmers market. And also ordinance 2016-26, which is authorized in agreement with James G. Zapka Incorporated to provide audit services to the City of Brooklyn for the audit periods of 2015-2018 pursuant to authorization of the Auditor of State. We also anticipate going into executive session at the end of council meeting to discuss matters of personnel. We will now proceed with our regular council meeting. At this time, we'll have the public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and well for the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name, address, and you will be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or less. Okay, very good. We will now move on with reports of committees, commissions, and boards. Tonight, we start with the Finance Committee. Councilwoman Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. The Finance Committee met earlier this evening at 6:30, and we recommended that council adopt the following ordinances that are on third reading this evening, and that is ordinance 2016-9, authorizing the mayor to enter into a service agreement renewal with Bailey Communications to provide the maintenance of network, software, support, and other related services for the city of Brooklyn. The next group of ordinances deals with our REC Department. As Mr. Van Kirk stated, it's updating the fees that we charge. Ordinance 2016-15, which amends Section 1 of ordinance 2008-65, establishing the fee for the evening basketball program within the Recreation Department of the City of Brooklyn. Ordinance 2016-16, establishing the fee for the evening volleyball program within the Recreation Department of the City of Brooklyn, and that's going to be a new program that we're trying. Ordinance 2016-17, which amends Section 1 of ordinance 2009-7, providing for fees for instructions in ice skating within the Brooklyn, City of Brooklyn Recreation Department. Ordinance 2016-18, which amends Section 1 of ordinance 2009-23, providing for fees for softball, baseball, soccer field usage within the City of Brooklyn Recreation Department. Ordinance 2016-19, establishing registration fees for T-ball and baseball programs within the Recreation Department of the City of Brooklyn, and repealing ordinances 2010-10 and 2011-15. The two new ordinances that we have on the agenda this evening, ordinance 2016-25, this establishes the fee for participation in the City of Brooklyn farmers market. The range for the fee will be from a minimum of $5 to a maximum of $30 per day, per vendor. We have a dates range of Tuesdays from June 28th to October 4th, and this would be on the front lawn of the REC Center. Ordinance 2016-26, authorizing an agreement with James G. Zapka CPA to provide audit services to the City of Brooklyn for the audit periods 2015 to 2018 pursuant to authorization of the Auditor of State. Basically, the state auditor no longer has the staffing to conduct the annual audits for smaller cities, so they contract with private firms, and this is us just formally entering into the contract with the firm that we've been assigned with. We received an update from the mayor regarding some new information on Time Warner. Are you gonna talk about that, or do you want me to mention it? Okay. And she'll elaborate on that during her report. And that completes my report for the finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci. Next up is Recreation Board, Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. Youth soccer registration is ongoing. This is your last chance to sign up. Cost is $60 for residents, $65 for non-residents. Per certificate must be presented at registration. In-house league for players, U3 to U8. All checks must be made out to the Brooklyn Recreation Department. Youth baseball registration is ongoing through March 31st. Per certificates must be presented at registration. Costs are as follows. $55 for participants who reside in the City of Brooklyn. Current resident ID card required. $65 for participants who do not reside in the City of Brooklyn but attend a school in Brooklyn. Proof of school required, i.e. report card. The next Recreation Board meeting will be held on Monday, April 18th, in the REC Center meeting room at 7:00 PM, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Next up is Domestic Abuse Commission, Councilwoman Politzky.
Thank you. The Domestic Violence Committee had its first meeting of 2016 on March 16th. A former victim addressed the committee and told us how she felt, how difficult it is to access the system and to get the needed help in a crisis situation. We plan to invite personnel involved in the process to see if we can do anything as a city to make the process easier for the victim. Sometimes the best efforts of the system aren't good enough. If you saw yesterday's Plain Dealer, it had a story of a victim from the Akron-Canton area who had police officer brothers, a large dog, and protection orders, and unfortunately, none of that was enough. But residents of Brooklyn can be confident that our law enforcement team is doing everything possible to keep the victim safe and to prosecute offenders. I will keep you updated on any information that we get as time goes on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Politzky. Next up is the Planning Commission, Councilwoman Pucci.
Thank you. The next meeting for the Planning Commission is Thursday, April 7th at 6:00 PM in the Brooklyn City Hall Conference Room to hear the following. Requests from Scott Clifford, representing TDA Architects for site plan approval located at 4500 Ridge Road, permanent parcel number 432-23-005, formerly Brookridge Elementary School, and 4525 Rodone Road, permanent parcel number 432-22-002, formerly Rodone School. Request previously presented at the July 9th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. This request was deferred from the March 3rd, 2016 Planning Commission meeting because there was not a quorum available of members who are eligible to vote, and this is because one of our members who was present at the meeting is also on the school board, so he is ineligible to vote on this. Any other business that may become before the Planning Commission. All individuals may attend the City of Brooklyn Planning Commission meeting and have the right to comment either in person at the meeting or in writing, too. City of Brooklyn Planning Commission, 7619 Memphis Avenue, Brooklyn, Ohio, 44144. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci. The school board meeting was held on March 15th. Some issues that were discussed at the school board meeting. The school is waiting on a structural analysis from the stadium fire to get a better idea of the cost to repair the damages moving forward. The district will also go out to bid on a new softball field, a new football practice field, and those bids will be open at the end of this month. They're also working with the city for some shared services for the city baseball programs. Thirdly, Oliver, the production that was done this year by the school, had 130 students participate in it, and that is 1 in 10 of every student in the district, so that's a very good participation percentage. They also reviewed the state report card. They also picked a new football coach, Sean Belville, and according to Cleveland.com, Sean has been coaching football since 1997, and we want to welcome the City of Brooklyn and wish the best of luck to the Hurricanes this upcoming season. Also, as far as Polaris goes, Brooklyn has the highest number of juniors and seniors enrolled in the program and any other school that participates with Polaris. Also, the Winter Scholar athletes were announced. There were 48 athletes that received these honors, and these student athletes had to maintain a 3.0 GPA or above to receive this honor, so I want to say congratulations to those 48 students. The next school board meeting will be held April 19th at 6:00 PM, and all are welcome to attend. We will now move on to the reports of council, and tonight we begin with Mrs. Politzky.
A little commercial for the Laurel Garden Club, of which I've been a member for several years. It was established in November of 1953, and it's 63 years old. We're going to have a meeting on April 12th at 7:00 PM in the community room of the Brooklyn Fire Station. Erin Richardson, Ohio State Extension Service, will speak about programs they offer in community development, urban agriculture, and youth engagement. Come and learn how we, as a garden club, can partner with OSU in making Brooklyn a place where young and old can benefit from planting gardens at home and in the community. Please try to bring a guest. Our youth today are at risk. We all know that. They need many ways to occupy their time. Sports is one of them, but I think gardening is another option. Come to our meeting in April and listen to what the speaker has to offer us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mrs. Tomusco, and first I want to say, welcome back. Glad you're back with us.
Yeah, and it's still Miss. I didn't get married. I was just out for surgery.
Oh, sorry, Mrs. Tomusco.
No, that's okay. Thank you very much. Yeah, first off, I'd like to say it's wonderful to be back. I started out the new year thinking, oh, this is great. I'm finally on Brooklyn Council. I can start to contribute to the city that I love and that I've made my home, and you know, that old saying is one of my favorite sayings in life, and it's, "Man plans, and God laughs." So God obviously had other plans for me, and I did need to have surgery. I just want people to know that it wasn't elective surgery, and it wasn't that I needed a vacation and decided I was just gonna hang loose for a while. I did have fairly major surgery, and I'm still recovering, but it's wonderful to be back. So I wanted to thank everybody. I really stayed. When you're kind of laying around, the best thing to do to get you to sleep is to read all the council minutes and all of the briefings, so I stayed pretty up to speed on what was going on in council, and I really wanted to thank Councilwoman Pucci and Councilman Tony DiMarco and Mary Bell Beer. They were truly wonderful when I was out. They called, they checked in on me, they answered questions, kept me abreast of what was going on in council so that I could keep track of what was going on in the budget, et cetera. And then Mary went above and beyond the call of duty. She's not here tonight to thank, but she brought me a goodie basket from Sokolowskis, which, after how many weeks of toast and chicken soup, was most appreciated, so I just wanted to say thank you. But enough about my personal life. I can get back to work here. You know, just a couple things. I'm only a member of one committee. I was only assigned one committee to be a member of as a councilperson, and that is the Safety Committee, the Public Safety Committee. So I wanted to let people know that we're gonna, I want to start having meetings of that committee, and if any of you have anything that you would like us to raise at that committee, primarily, of course, police and fire and public safety, feel free to call me or send me an email, because I want to make sure that our committee meetings are useful to the public of Brooklyn from a public safety standpoint. I want to make the committee as meaningful as possible. I also just had a few comments on economic development. I know Andy's not here, so I don't know if I should go ahead or not, but just a couple of things. I was out when the whole IKEA thing, you know, sort of got a little bit of a setback, and I was just gonna comment that I'd really like to see us potentially, try to see if we can't get an article in Crane's Cleveland Business so that we reiterate that Brooklyn is open for business. Potentially, Andy can maybe write a letter to the editor, to Crane's, better explaining how much open land we do have for development, and then maybe in the future, we might want to look at even taking an ad out in Crane's in terms of what open land there is in Brooklyn for development, because I think we need to keep it at the forefront that, you know, there is land available in Brooklyn for development, and I didn't want the impression to go that we were sort of, we didn't have any land. And I think Andy probably spoke in air or was misquoted, but I didn't want to leave the impression. And I think Crane's Cleveland Business is, I know it's something I read all the time, it's a good magazine to get us out and get the information out there. And the other thing I just wanted to comment is, I know Andy's working on a SWOT analysis, which looks at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats for a city, to see where we have opportunities, where we're strong, where we're weak, and what we can build on as part of doing a marketing plan for the city of Brooklyn. And I just wanted to comment that last year, I had done a pro bono, free, basically, marketing project for the city where we had a whole bunch of focus groups, and we got groups of seniors, we got groups of young professionals, we got people from the church group, people from just all sections of Brooklyn, and we got them together and asked them basically the same questions in terms of what they thought about Brooklyn. So we do have a SWOT analysis in place that we had done, so hopefully Andy can put that in with the work he's doing, and so that we can start to do a good marketing plan for the city of Brooklyn, because this is a great place to live, and it's a great place to do business, so we need to keep getting that positive face out to the public. And I think that's all I have at this time, but thank you. It's great to be back.
Next up is Councilwoman Pucci.
Thank you. First, I'd like to welcome back Ms. Tomusco. We're glad that you're back with us. Also, I hope everyone had a wonderful Easter. It was a beautiful day weather-wise, so I hope everyone was able to enjoy that holiday. Just briefly, I'd like to congratulate Councilwoman Mary Bell Beer and her family. I saw that today the City of Cleveland has named a street after her grandparents who founded the restaurant Sokolowskis. It's called Sokolowskis Way, and this is really an honor for their family and a reflection of the long history they have in that area, and also their commitment to the City of Cleveland. So when you see her, say congratulations. Mrs. Politzky, just a quick question on the domestic violence victim. Was that person from Brooklyn, and they were concerned about how things were handled?
Well, no, they weren't concerned about how things were handled here. She was just telling us about five or six years ago, the process she went through to try and get a protection order, but not from Brooklyn, from the county, or however you get it.
Okay, I understand.
I don't know if things have gotten better since her incident. I'm not really sure.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to get some clarification on that. And Chief Milkie, a couple times last fall, I had asked for the copies of the, when we got our camera policy in place, and I understand we've got the cameras now, so I'm imagining that we've got the policy. Okay, thank you very much. The Brooklyn Community Improvement Corporation had a meeting earlier this evening at 6:00 PM, and this was in the City Hall Conference Room, so I have a brief report from that. Our first order of business was election of another trustee. We had two applications for that position, and at the meeting this, earlier this evening, we did appoint Mr. Andy Selhertz. So congratulations, Mr. Selhertz. He'll be our newest member of the Community Improvement Corporation. We approved the annual financial report for 2015, which has to be filed by March 31st. We also approved the State of Ohio Auditor's 2015 Annual Report. Under Other Business, we did move, and we went into executive session to discuss potential sale of real estate. We came out of executive session, reconvened, and then we adjourned the meeting at 6:35. And finally, I just want to mention, congratulations to Peggy Hovan, who's retiring from our police department. She has served our community since 1983. She's also very active at St. Thomas More. Peggy has been a wonderful, dedicated employee. I've known her for a really long time. She has always gone above and beyond what was expected of her. And just on a personal note, I wish her a very long and healthy retirement. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci. Next up is Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. Again, just a reminder, the Youth Opportunities is currently accepting applications for the Summer Work Program. If you have any questions or would like to register, go to www.youthopportunities.org. Information is also available at the City Hall, the REC Center, Brooklyn High School, and the Brooklyn Library. Registration closes Monday, May 2nd at 5:00 PM, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. I don't really have much of a report, and just to clarify something that Ms. Tomusco said, not to correct what she was saying, but the article she was talking about with, that Mr. Udris was quoted, said, his exact quote was, "For a community like Brooklyn, we have no other undeveloped land." What he was referring to is the land that is zoned for this particular purpose. We have, which is retail, essentially. We have lots of land that's available. In fact, we have a developer right now that's working with, at the AG property to develop that land. And so, you know, Mr. Udris, again, it was not clarified in that email exactly, or excuse me, in this article what he was talking about, but that's what he was talking about, as is not unusual in the media. Oftentimes, quotes are not specified what he was talking about. So just to make it clear, Mr. Udris was, that's what he's referring to. We obviously have undeveloped land here in the city. Sure.
That's why I was bringing up that we should maybe write a letter to Crane's Cleveland Business or something, just to clarify.
But I did want to read what he said in there, just for that, for the record. So, but obviously, we do have land here, and I know that with the developers there for the AG property in particular, they're working tirelessly to get things moving. Unfortunately, as has already been stated in the contract for that, we cannot do anything as far as development over there until AG is gone, and that's per the contract that was signed with AG when they sold the property to the developers. And so, obviously, IKEA has hit a roadblock. We're still optimistic that something will come with the Army Corps of Engineers, but as you all know, working with the federal government, things move very, very slowly. And so, we're, obviously, we are trying, and letters have been sent to both of our senators and to our Congresswoman, Marcy Capter, regarding this, and hopefully, we'll see something come to fruition here sooner rather than later, especially considering it is an election year, at least one of our senators is up for reelection this year. So, all right, that's all I have. We'll move on now to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. I hope everyone a wonderful Easter. I'd first like to congratulate Karen Fredo. She was named the new senior director last week. I also want to thank Peggy Hovan for her service to the City of Brooklyn. I know Peggy is a staple down in the police station, and she's going to be sorely missed by all the officers down there. I also like to welcome Jim McDonald to the City of Brooklyn as our new prosecutor. And additionally, as I stated in the last meeting, Mr. Anavich is retiring, so Joanne Hag will be our interim finance director for the time being until I officially announce the next finance director. If you're interested in doing some home renovations this year, and you missed the Heritage Home Program presentations last week, there's information available on the city's website. You can also go to www.heritagehomeprogram.org. There's information on the City Hall desk, as well as you can call the Building Department for more information. The Service Department released their 2015 Annual Report, and it's available on the city's website. Over the last couple of weeks, the Economic Development Director, Andy Udris, and I have continued our meetings with business owners throughout the community. We've met with Chuck Matthews of Matthews Metalwork, Michael Knoll, who owns the property at 4550 Tiedemann, who currently leases to Woleski Trucking, and we've also met with Bernie Goliath of Metal Fabricating Corporation. All these businesses are happy here in Brooklyn. We've also heard from Metal Fabricating Corporation will be expanding this year in the City of Brooklyn, so we're happy to hear about that. As part of our expanding wellness program and working with University Hospital, all the city directors and a handful of employees and Councilperson Barb Politzky will be trained in CPR tomorrow morning. The city will host another session for council members and any other employees who wish to participate, and we may extend this to the public. I'm happy to see the farmers market on the agenda tonight. A couple of years ago, this was previously brought up, and actually, the meetings talked about with Debbie Tomusco, the marketing meetings, the young professionals really wanted to see a farmers market in an older community, so this is something that was very popular in these meetings, so I'm glad that we're finally kickstarting this program in the city of Brooklyn. This past week, or this upcoming week, are the Building Commissioner, Dave Coltsar, and the Economic Development Director, and myself, will be meeting with Jim Rukakis and Thriving Communities and the County Land Bank. We are going to start to develop a city neighborhood stabilization plan for this year, so I'm very excited about that. This is one of the most complained-about subjects in our city, and rightfully so. We need to make sure we stabilize our housing stock here in the city of Brooklyn, so we're going through many means right now, creating ordinances and creating a plan to make that happen over the next coming years. And lastly, as far as the council meetings on TV, it is up and running on AT&amp;T U-verse right now. WOW should be launched in the next week or two, and then Time Warner Cable is really the one that's going to take some time from here. They submitted a bill to us, a contract for $21,000. This is to build out the fiber circuit for the installation of that circuit, the equipment cost, and the ongoing maintenance. Personally, I think this bill is very high, $21,000, to host this program, so I have been going back and forth with our rep trying to reduce this price going forward, and I asked the city council to kind of weigh in to see what number they're comfortable with with providing this service. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Can we put on our website and maybe like an email blast to people about the fact that with AT&amp;T, we're up and running, and then, of course, you know, as WOW comes on? And I did have a couple of residents ask me, this was at the end of last week, and so I didn't get a chance to call anyone today. They asked me what channel it's on, on AT&amp;T U-verse, and I don't have it, so I didn't know. So maybe if we could give them the specific information, you know, what channel it's on, and then also, when we get WOW up and running, if we could kind of get the word out there.
Sure. I don't know what channels, but AT&amp;T U-verse is 99, a resident said, but it also is on demand, so they can ask it at any time.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mayor. Next up, a director's report. We just have one this evening, and that is from our police chief, Milkie.
Thank you, Councilman Van Kirk. I just wanted to reiterate the importance of this Friday. It's Peggy Hovan's last day, April 1st. It also happens to be her birthday, so she's giving herself a birthday gift on that day. She served 28 years for the City of Brooklyn. All the way, the positions she held were parapolicice officer, which was something we had in the 80s, as a dispatcher, and most recently, as the assistant to the police chief. She served four different police chiefs. That unto itself is probably an accomplishment that should be recognized. She is the logistical backbone of our department. She coordinates many things for us, but above all else, she's our Aunt Peg. She's kind, she's compassionate, she's caring, she fed us, she feeds us. If you've ever been in her office, you understand that she feeds anybody that walks in there. She is very active at St. Thomas More. You'll probably see more of her if you're a parishioner there. That's her plans at this point. She's sincere, or she will sincerely and truly be missed, not only by myself, but by the many people that have come across her in her 28 years, police department employees, and even the residents. There's still residents today that call her on a regular basis to report things to the police department. So with that, I wish her a happy and healthy retirement, and I hope to see her at church every Sunday, so, thank you.
Thank you, chief. All right, next up on our agenda is the, for confirmation of appointment to the Economic Development Committee, and I have a letter dated March 10th, 2016. Dear members of council, I am requesting city council confirmation on the appointment of Mr. David Hill to the City of Brooklyn Economic Development Committee. Mr. Hill will replace former committee member Ms. Deb Tomusco, who was appointed to fill the vacant council seat. Mr. Hill is the branch officer at Dollar Bank located in Brooklyn and former president of the Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce, an organization in which he is still active. I am confident that Mr. Hill will be a great addition to this committee. Attached, please find his resume to review, which is here. Thank you. Sincerely, Catherine Gallagher, Mayor. Motion for confirmation.
May I be recognized first?
Yes.
I just want to explain why I'm going to abstain. First of all, I want to say that I know Mr. Hill. He's a wonderful person. He is a great asset. He is a great asset in this community. He's dedicated a lot of time. He was a former president of our chamber. He's a very active member of our chamber. All the other members of this particular committee are either members of the administration, the mayor, or a representative from council, and I just think it's, I'm just not so sure that we've done enough to try and reach out and recruit someone with a little bit of a different background, whether it's economic development, commercial real estate, anything like that. So I'm going to remain consistent in my position that I am going to abstain, but this is no reflection on Mr. Hill at all, as a very dedicated member of our community. Thank you.
I'll make the motion to confirm.
I'll second.
To confirm the appointment, Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Abstain.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
I'll be up for. Okay.
Thank you. Next is ordinance 2015-77, establishing the full-time position of economic director for the City of Brooklyn, Ohio. This is held in abeyance. I wanted to take a vote on this tonight, but since the council member who introduced this is not here, we will push, hopefully take a vote on this the next meeting. Ordinance 2016-9 is on third reading, authorizing the mayor to enter into a service agreement renewal with Bailey Communication to provide maintenance of network, software, support, and other related services for the City of Brooklyn.
Move to adopt.
Second.
To adopt, Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Next up is ordinance 2016-15, which is up for third reading and adoption, amending section 1 of ordinance 2008-65, establishing the fee for the evening basketball program within Recreation Department of the City of Brooklyn.
Move to adopt.
Second.
To adopt, Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Ordinance 2016-16, on third reading for adoption, establishing the fee for the evening volleyball programs within the Recreation Department of the City of Brooklyn.
Move to adopt.
Second.
To adopt, Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Ordinance 2016-17, on third reading and up for adoption, is amending section 1 of ordinance 2009-7, providing for fees for instruction in ice skating within the City of Brooklyn Recreation Department.
Move to adopt.
Second.
To adopt, Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Ordinance 2016-18, on third reading up for adoption, is amending section 1 of ordinance 2009-23, providing for fees for softball, baseball, soccer field usage within the City of Brooklyn Recreation Department.
Move to adopt.
Second.
To adopt, Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Ordinance 2016-19 is on third reading and up for adoption, is establishing registration fees for the T-ball and baseball programs within the Recreation Department of the City of Brooklyn, and repealing ordinances 2010-10 and 2011-15.
Move to adopt.
Second.
To adopt, Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Ordinance 2016-22 is on second reading, and this is authorizing the sale of certain city-owned vehicles through gov deals, public internet auctioneers for the purpose of disposing of city vehicles and equipment at public sale, and this is one 1991 Caterpillar and one 2006 Pelican Street sweeper, and this is on second reading. Ordinance 2016-23 is also on second reading, establishing fees for advertising at the John M. Coyne Recreation Center. Next up is resolution 2016-1, and I'm going to read this in its entirety, is to honor and recognize Margaret Hovin for her service to the City of Brooklyn, Ohio. Says this, "Whereas Brooklyn City Council takes pride in recognizing outstanding citizens and public servants in our community who have contributed to the benefit of the City of Brooklyn, and whereas Margaret Peggy Hovin began with the City of Brooklyn in 1983 as a part-time para-police officer, and has a full-time dispatcher since 1989, also serving as secretary to the chief of police for the Brooklyn Police Department. And whereas during her time with the city, Peggy Hovin has served with four mayors, four police chiefs, and nearly 100 police officers, dispatchers, and other police and city employees. And whereas Peggy Hovin has a great love of family, church, community, and her work family, always doing good for others in many countless ways. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the City of Brooklyn, County of Cuyahoga, and State of Ohio, the administration of the City of Brooklyn and the Brooklyn City Council on behalf of the entire community, to hereby recognize and honor Margaret Hovin and congratulate and commend her on her outstanding and dedicated service to the City of Brooklyn, and further wish her well on her retirement. That it is found and determined that all formal actions of the council of the City of Brooklyn concerning and related to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of such body, that all deliberations of the council of the City of Brooklyn and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal regulations, including section 121.22 of the Ohio Re enforce Code. That this resolution shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon its passage and approval by the mayor. Otherwise, it shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law."
Introduce, file, suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
To adopt, Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Ordinance 2016-25 is on first reading. This establishes the fee for participation in the City of Brooklyn's farmers market. Also on first reading is ordinance 2016-26, authorizing agreement with James G. Zupka CPA Incorporated to provide audit services to the City of Brooklyn for the audit periods of 2015-2018 pursuant to authorization of the Order of State. And that is all we have on our agenda. We do anticipate moving to executive session. Does anyone else have anything they need to say on council floor before we move?
I move that we move, go into executive session for matters of personnel relating to the position of magistrate with the mayor and the law director.
I'd also like to discuss matters of the Finance Department as far as personnel.
Second.
To adjourn to executive session, Barb Politzky.